Good morning and welcome everybody. Please rise as we say the pledge and we'll have a prayer before we get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Davis, we have been praying.
Yes, Reverend Powell, we thank you with blessings of life. We thank you for liberty. We thank you, God, that we can come together as one people to do the business of the county. Give us wisdom, understanding in all things as we do our best for the people of Souda County. Pray, God, that you continue to be with Commissioner Pullman, Lord, to help heal everybody. God, so just see a miracle. Pray that your hand continue to be upon our community during this heat wave. We pray that you protect those that are more vulnerable at this time. And Lord, just be with us all and ask it all in precious form, the name of Jesus, and everybody, say it. Amen.
Thank you for that. It is the last meeting of June. June has happened.
Yes, it is.
June 26th. We'll start with the approval of the meeting minutes from June 17th.
Chairman Powell may approve the minutes of June 17th.
I will vacate the chair and sit down.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds.
Any comments or questions on the appropriation of funds? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds.
Any comments or questions on our transfer of funds? Hearing none.
Motion to approve, sir.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for fund transfers.
Any comments or questions on item four? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for various funds, moral obligations, and then announce certificates in a total amount of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred... Eight hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and forty-two cents.
Any comments, questions, or doubts? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous report.
Any comments or questions on our miscellaneous reports? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution to enter into contract for construction services for the alterations to the clerk of courts legal department regarding ARPA.
So we had a bid opening a week or so ago now. This is the recommendation from our engineer... our architect. C T B Inc. was awarded the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, which was the lowest response of bidder. This is specific to the ARPA funds that the commissioners are using towards this project. It's fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funds. The remainder is covered from the clerk of court certificate of title fund. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to adopt.
I have a second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of agreement between the Board of Souda County Commissioners and C T B Inc. regarding clerk of courts legal department.
This is the actual agreement between the commissioners and C T B Inc. for the project I just mentioned. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of notification from the High Department of Taxation regarding permissive sales tax.
April 2025, permissive sales tax is in. Sales local nine hundred and four thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars thirty-five cents. Sales actual four hundred and fifty... two dollars and one hundred and... Four hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars seventy-eight cents, excuse me. That's a total of one million three hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. This amount is seventy-nine thousand dollars and some change more than the April 2024. So we continue to see a positive trend, which is encouraging as we continue to review and watch our budget. We've mentioned before there's some things potentially happening at the state now that could drastically impact county operations with the inside knowledge. I know that's still being looked at. There's a standalone bill. It did not go into the budget bill, which was encouraging. But it's still a possibility. I'm sure they're still working on that. But for now, we have an upward trend. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request to apply for the 2025 Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act program grant regarding the sheriff.
This is 2025 Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act program grant, which would operate from October 1 of '25 to September 30 of 2027. The amount is two hundred thousand dollars. There are no matching funds. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of notice to proceed for the S C I C R 163-0.00 Share Hollow Safety Improvements Project regarding the engineer.
Any comments or questions on the notice to proceed? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of notice to proceed for the S C I C R 40-8.36 Rocky Fork Road Bridge Replacement Project regarding the engineer.
Any comments or questions on the Rocky Fork Road Bridge replacement? Notice to proceed. Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of change order number four, Souda County Fort Hill Mark's Communication Tower regarding ARPA.
This is a change order, excuse me, asking it to be pushed back two to three weeks and additional thirteen days. Yeah. Any additional updates on this project, Commissioner Davis?
Sure. I think everybody's been to the top of Fort Hill lately, which it's hard to get there unless you get there from the Rubegill side because of the road slippage, which they're addressing. I think he said they were going to start working on that July. Thousand-foot slip on the road on Fort Hill. So it's a huge project, one-to-million-dollar project to fix that. But anyways, if you go up to the top of the hill now, you will see a big, beautiful tower, Mark's Tower. It is big. But the grounding was the issue. They knew that there was potential that grounding was going to be an issue because of bedrock issues on top of the hill. And they had to go to... I went down with this last week or the week before last on the alternate for the grounding. And they had to order the new materials. The new materials, the lead time is longer than what they thought. So they just want to push this back thirteen days completion, I think, end of August, August 25th. We're still good. Just look back it up a little bit, but the Mark's Tower will enhance our communications between our law enforcement, court responders, and other agencies. Everybody on the Mark system, which I think there's like twenty-some agencies on it, that'll increase our communication greatly. Close up divot holes in the county. Those are the areas where we have no coverage. Close up several of them. And the biggest ones, they're the greatest concern. And things will be done. So it's a big win for Souda County.
Thank you for that update. I'll make a motion to approve that. All right, I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of community corrections grant agreement with the High Department of Rehabilitation and Correction regarding adult probation.
This is adult probation Community Corrections Act 2.0 grant agreement in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars from the High Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections. This would operate from July 1 of '25 to June 30 to '27. The grant corrections program services are designed to reduce or divert the number of persons committed to the state penal institutions and/or detained in and/or committed to local corrections agencies. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of community corrections grant agreement with the High Department of Rehabilitation and Correction regarding Portsmouth Municipal Court.
So this is similar grant. This supports with municipal corrections act 2.0 grant agreement, the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars from the High Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections. It would operate from July 1 of '25 to June 30 to '27. Once again, this grant corrections program services are designed to reduce or divert the number of persons committed to the state penal institutions and/or detained in and/or committed to local corrections agencies. Comments, questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of authorizing the clerk to advertise a public hearing notice for the 2026 tax budget.
So we'll be advertising a... So we'll be advertising a hearing notice for the tax budget. That is for July...
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
The hearing, yes, yeah.
This is budget time. This is where everybody gets frustrated with the commission. We have so much money to allocate every year by from the budget commission. For those that don't understand how we allocate the funds, we get our dollar amount projections from the budget commission. And then we have to work within that scope. I think our request over that number this year is close to seven million dollars. So clearly, we then have to go through and whittle some line items and some adjustments and quite a bit of adjustments to find seven million dollars. But that is part of what we do here. That is our main function to try to keep the county healthy. So this is just, one of the requirements is a public hearing for the twenty-six tax budget, which at this point looks like July fifteenth. Comments, questions? That's enough.
You said it all.
All right, all right, entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yep, my second.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of rescheduling a normal scheduled commissioners' meeting to another day.
So I know we have a July during our organizational meeting in January. We set July ten as one of our normal meeting days. We do know we have some scheduling conflicts where it causes not having a quorum. I believe both of us have scheduling conflicts that day. So I am looking to potentially move that to July fifteenth, same day as our hearing for our tax budget. Any comments, question? Okay with that? All right.
Yeah, we both have a conflict. And actually, with the way it is right now, with Commissioner Coleman being out, it's very difficult to maintain it. Well, it's not been difficult. We've done it, maintain a quorum. But the simple fact is that we'll both be out at the same time.
Yep.
Instead of going different weeks and making it to where we have to schedule even more, move more things around. So it'll work out good, actually.
All right.
But this gives everybody advance notice to get their paperwork into our clerk and make sure that we're getting things processed.
So there'll be no commissioners' meeting that entire week? And we'll move it to the following Tuesday?
On the July fifteenth, we'll have two meetings.
But we, yeah, we'll still keep the Thursday, yeah.
Yep. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
My second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of sub-grant agreement with community action organization for Title Twenty Base Meals at Home regarding J F S.
The purpose of this agreement is to provide one meal a day, five days a week, for the elderly home gone residents who cannot prepare their meals to meet their nutritional needs. This is such a vital service and important partnership that our local job family services and community action have in taking care of our elderly population. So I appreciate the hard work of this, but this is the agreement to continue that service. Comments, questions? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of sub-grant agreement with Southern Ohio Task Force on Domestic Violence, Title Twenty Transfer Counseling Service Regarding J F S.
So this is another sub-grant agreement, this time with the Southern Ohio Task Force on Domestic Violence. The purpose of this agreement is to provide counseling services to eligible families whose children are at risk for use illegal act. Any comments or questions? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreement for non-emergency transportation net services regarding J F S.
So this is a non-emergency transportation services through J F S. This is effective July one of twenty-five to June thirtieth to twenty-six. The services are as follows. Access Souda County, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The counseling center, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Executive coach, also doing businesses, Portsmouth Taxi Services, one million, five hundred thousand dollars. Jackson Transportation, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty cents. And then the United Souda Senior Activities, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. These are contracts that get bid out and awarded through our J F S department to ensure folks have that non-emergency transportation to doctors visits or critical services that they need. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
My second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of realignment of funds for Department of Youth Services fiscal year twenty-five grant funding regarding juvenile court.
This is a realignment of funds for the juvenile court, for the Department of Youth Services, fiscal year twenty-five grant funding for the grand administration's staffing changes, salaries, and buyouts, which will decrease in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred dollars, and increase respite, short-term care, alternative to detention in the amount of five thousand dollars, and an increase for future American women in the amount of one thousand, six hundred dollars, and an increase in future American me in the amount of one thousand, six hundred dollars, increasing the total amount of the program calls, one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
And I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. That is the end of our agenda during our meetings. If you've never been, we open it up first to items on agenda for any questions. Any items on agenda first? Okay, great.
On the agenda, the realignment of the funds, is that because the CASAP program was abandoned?
So, and I know you're not on the microphone. The question is, is the realignment of funds through juvenile court because the CASAP program was abandoned? I do not believe this funding was connected to that program. That is a question for Judge Bennett, but I do not believe that, because we can see where they did the decreases and the increases. So I don't believe that to be true. Do you have a different thought on that?
They're not connected.
Yeah, and we can always double check with the judge. Thank you for that question. Any other additional questions, items on agenda, anything online? On agenda, Bill? Sure.
Hey, thanks for the opportunity. First question comes up under item fourteen, where it talks about the grant agreement and everything. Let me double check where I'm at here. Take that back. First up, clerk of courts, is it on budget? Reconstruction of the offices and everything?
So it was literally just awarded. So what happened today? So we did the bid, bid out. This is just essentially an agreement to start. So to say whether it's on budget or not, that's...
It is right now.
It is now, as of day one. Yes.
We hope and pray that it stays on budget. C T B also did, did I say that right? C T B, I think, yeah.
C T, C T B.
They also did the title department. And we did not get huge increases. I don't know for any change orders at all. So I can't imagine that'll happen this time around, so.
I know there's always a lot of fluctuation in pricing with building materials and everything, so it's kind of hard to tell at this point. I just thought I'd throw it out there for public consumption. And I'm back on track with items fourteen and fifteen. What are the parameters of those grant agreements? Can they only be used for certain things, you know, in their respective recipients?
Yeah, and the goal is, and that's why it's connected to probation. The goal is to help fund the probation departments, both here and at municipal, to ensure folks are not going into the system, whether it be the jail or the local penal system. So we can get you a copy of the agreements if you want to see them build with that. I mean, that's the short end of it. But it's very, very specific to helping the probation department's function and keep people in the community, if you will, and hopefully productive. Some of these services are used, you'll see them out cleaning up the roads and different things, so.
There we go. That's what I was looking for.
You're looking for the road parts?
Yeah, that's it.
And they are very active. I know our probation department here is still very active and working with probationers to clean up the roads or even do work here at the courthouse. They do quite a bit, so we appreciate their services. And, you know, if there's a means to work off a fine or work off some fees, and they don't have the money available to them, they can always put in some sweat equity. So it's a great program.
Okay. And I had a couple of questions all the way to make sure.
Okay, great.
There's not any more on the agenda.
Any other questions on agenda? If not, Bill, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you again, you very much. Has there been any progress made on the future of our economic development office to this point?
We've been having a lot of conversations, I can tell you that much. We've been looking at, and Commissioner Davis has also been looking at, the, what is the appropriate structure? So we've kicked around C I C and Non-Proff. Those conversations are still very much ongoing to make sure. I mean, there's a knee-jerk to rush into something, but we're going to get an opportunity to do it right hopefully one more time, so. That's my stance from Commissioner Davis. If you have anything additional?
All right. And then another question off the agenda. Recently, there was a report that came out, matter of fact, I read it this morning, about the state of Ohio receiving a C rating or C grade for infrastructure throughout the entire state. Are the commissioners complies with the improvements that you all have been able to help get done as far as infrastructure is concerned here in Souda County to date?
So when you're talking infrastructure, is that rating specifically to roads and bridges? And do you know, Bill?
A lot of it, yes.
Because I haven't taken a report yet.
Roads and bridges, plus a lot of, you know, water transportation issues and everything.
So I'll brag on our engineer for a little bit. I know he loves that anyway. I can tell you that his office has been fantastic in terms of getting grant dollars into the county. We have some of the most bridges of any county.
Sixth.
We're the sixth out of eighty-eight in terms of the amount of bridges. But also, he was one of the top awardees for getting money to replace all these bridges. You just heard a couple of notice to proceed today. So in terms of the county infrastructure, let me preface county and kind of the scope of really the engineer, it's not us. Sometimes people think we do roads. We don't do roads, yes. Every chance I'll get it, I'll say it.
I don't want to get a shirt.
We, no roads.
No roads. We don't do roads.
So we don't do roads.
Just make sure on the back it says, "Who does them?"
Yeah, and, you know, it's, it's important for people to understand. So the county system is very solid. There's been a lot of money put into the county system, a lot of grant money. I mean, the fact that the engineer was able to get two-point-five million dollars in almost a week to fix Fort Hill from that slippage, I mean, his team moves very fast. So the county system, I'll speak to, I think he's doing a fantastic job. We also have the city system. And from the county perspective, I know that Darren has been very active over the past three years now with the partnership that's still relatively new with the city and their shared purchasing for Blacktop. I know there's a partnership specifically happening for one of the roads, but then also their park and ride. I just came through this office a couple of weeks ago.
One forty.
The one forty park and ride. Then you also have the townships, and, you know, they have a, they're all very different, and they have drastically different budgets, and I think they try the best they can. But once again, the partnership with the engineer and the shared purchasing and shared equipment helps their money go quite a bit further as well, so. You know, in terms of the infrastructure, I think we're good. Do we have roads that need addressed? Yeah, but we need to make sure we understand who needs to address them versus just kind of blanket statements of, hey, go fix the roads. Sometimes it's very specific municipalities. Sometimes it's the state. Like, we have a main corridor that runs through that the state is still responsible for most of, so. I would say, I would say I'm pleased with how they're doing. Could they always do more? Of course, of course. But with the budget they have and the amount of grant money brought into this county and the hard work that that has had to take, I can't imagine where we would have been had he not been able to gather that amount of grant money. And he keeps a tally. I know you spoke to him multiple times, Bill, so.
Well, you kind of answered the follow-up question that if you wanted to talk about the roads that you were not responsible for. Anyway, so, good answer.
Yeah.
And I know over the last eight, ten months or so, there've been some difficult moments, you know, in here asking questions with the commissioners, but I believe and give them credit where credit's due. I want to commend the commissioners for the naming of the building out at the county garage in Clyde Wallace's. I attended that ceremony and did a newspaper article on it. I also reported on radio about it. Well deserved, and he's a good man.
Yeah, and Clyde, even some of the strategy, he started in talking to Engineer Lebron, some of the strategy that Clyde started is still very much things they're doing today and some of this thought process, how he laid out the strategy to get our systems to where they need to be. So I know Darren appreciated the resolution as well. I'm glad we were able to do it at his recommendation. And, yeah, you know, sometimes you sit in these seats and you don't know really what the lasting impact is. And clearly Clyde made a lasting impact on this community, and we appreciate his service.
You guys are to be commended. Brian, did you have anything to comment, follow up on that?
Yeah, on both questions. On Mr. Willis, he deserves the accolades that he received there for sure. The paving program that he started years ago has gotten to where we are today. I think, I think the, and this blends in with question one. I think we would be much further ahead. We would see less chip and seal. I think, you know, everybody hates chip and seal. I hate chip and seal. Everybody hates chip and seal. We would be further ahead on that if the cost hadn't gone up so much. I know when I first came in eleven years ago, to do a mile was forty thousand dollars. Forty thousand dollars to do a mile of asphalt, you know, to pave road. Now it's, it's in excess of ninety thousand. So unless your revenue, gas tax, things like that, keep up with that inflation number, you're not paving more miles. You're paving less miles. And he's trying his best to try to juggle that, you know? Sometimes we do chip and seal to keep roads alive long enough to get to them. That's the other thing. Sometimes they will seal a road with chip and seal to prevent the base of that road from degrading to the point where they have to replace everything. So it's a juggling act out there. It's a big deal. Back to question one, a little bit more details? No, I'm not happy. Not so much with the county. The county, he does a really good job. I'm not real happy with state. And I don't know what the grading was, if it was just for the state of Ohio.
It was, yes.
Oh, it's just for the state of Ohio.
Yeah, overall for the state of Ohio.
Overall, it's a touch. That touches so many things. But on roads, what we're seeing, we're seeing the same thing with the state that the county's juggling too, but with the state, we're seeing state routes. The ones that are coming to mind right now is three thirty-five and three forty-eight, even parts of seventy-three, that were not paved. There was a fancy chip and seal program done on them. And it doesn't look good. It's not, it's not top, you know, first class, so. It's, it's not, it's not top, you know, first class, so, but it's because of the cost, but I would really like to see a deep dive into ODOT finances. Or is the money going toward roads and other infrastructure? I'll say it out loud, because it's not good. I drive 335 every day, you do too, okay? Of course, Sodobill's a different story right now. It looks like someone bombed Sodobill because of the way they're dealing with the water, but that's infrastructure, that's a huge project going on right now. But it is, and this is no reflection to the guys out in Lucasville or, you know, it, it is the budget they're given to work with, right? They're given so many dollars to do so much work. But we're not gaining, and we're not even maintaining, we're, we're falling behind. And, and that's a problem. Water infrastructure, we are blessed in, in Southern County with water districts in the county primarily that do a great job. They really do. Of course, of course, with water, they're going through some major infrastructure upgrades right now with the water plant and everything else. So there, there's hundreds of millions of dollars going on there. Wastewater, we're seeing that in Sodobill, or, you know, storm, storm drains, everything else. There's, there's so many projects going on, it's nothing funny, but, but at the same time, there, there are billions of dollars of projects that need to be done that are not funded. And really, there's no money to fund. So, well, hundreds of millions here in Southern County, but across the state, I know, any, anytime there's an infrastructure request, the request goes way beyond what the GA, the General Assembly could actually do, way beyond. So, I understand the C rating. I, I, I think if we want to be this manufacturing Mecca, that the infrastructure has to keep up with it. And what we're seeing is, that's not the case. And then, when we do bring in those big companies, what we're seeing is local communities are being taxed so heavy to fund those projects that people are leaving. They're literally moving out, they're like, I can't do this. And so there has to be a balance there. And we're seeing that, we saw it with Intel, we were seeing with Honda, with the plans north, I mean, it's, it's a big problem. Some would argue that's a good problem to have. I would like to have that problem, Senator, I really would. I'd like to have to navigate that, Chairman, but we're, it, it's a concern, it really is.
I, I tell my wife, I call it all the time, I call it roadway triage. And that's exactly what it is. It's just to keep the road passable somewhat, I'm sure.
Well, you know, it, it goes back to the who's responsible for what. Let, let's face it, One industry, the space between New Boston and Portsmouth, everybody knows the route. I mean, go through there, you drive in, you get a deep tissue massage in your car and going through, right? It's so rough, it's rough as a cop, and people are like, why, why don't they fix that? Well, they patch it, because the agreement is that ODOT pays it, and then the city has to take care of it for, is it ten years, something like that? Maintain for ten years, and the fix there is to patch holes. And it's one of the large, I mean, the most widely traveled arteries in our area, it literally is the neck of the hourglass. You know, everything, I mean, that's, that's it, and everything flows through there. To fix that right, it would cost millions of dollars because of the road base. And paving does not fix it. The whole road base needs torn out.
I know, Justin, Miss Zooli, our state representative, did a lot of great work up in Columbus about making sure a certain bill didn't get through that would pass that big cost on to villages and, and other communities.
Right.
And make it, and keep it at the state responsibility.
Right. I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine if the funding is there, if they want to give it to the village and the city, if the funding is there to do it, but just to say we're not going to be responsible anymore, that doesn't, that doesn't work. And so, everybody, I mean, we hear this all the time, commissioners need to fix One industry, and I don't, I don't.
I'll get you a shovel.
But, but, but the problem is, it needs totally redone, and all we've done is Band-Aids, ODOT does Band-Aids, and it's not going to fix it. It all totally needs to be redone, and last time I checked, and this was several years ago, the, I mean, the roughest one was two million. So, and, and you know the stretch I'm talking about, it's not a mile. It, you know, so, it's, it's a big deal. Good question, though, fair question.
God, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Not on the agenda? Thanks, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Scott.
It's always hard to call it, Bill, he takes all the good questions.
Yeah, you got a lot to go up to now, Bill, Bill already went.
No, I know. So recently, the University of North Carolina released an analysis of the One Big Beautiful Bill Act, specifically the effects it may have on rural hospitals. I know we were just talking about Representative Pizzoli, I know that recently he publicly said that he is concerned about hospitals in the region. I was wondering if the commission was tracking that? I know that SOMC tops the list of rural hospitals in Ohio that could be adversely affected by this bill.
Yeah, so it's always concerning when you start seeing funding cuts, especially when different populations, quite frankly, their reimbursement model due to their community and their, the economics skews heavily one way, and I know they have a heavy Medicaid base there, so it's definitely concerning. I mean, we were just talking before the meeting that there's some Ohio senators trying to get additional carve-out money specific to rural hospitals to, to offset whatever may be coming, so I know it's still kind of in flux with what it could be. There's some different things that, I know the local hospital was working on, Mr. Darius, I don't know if you want to weigh in there, but it, it's definitely concerning, it's not out yet, and I know that they're looking heavily at it, I've spoken to some local folks. There's some strategies to, to ensure viability, but with any cuts, you know, services could be impacted.
Yeah.
And I used to, because once again, we're not in those meetings, and we, we don't see the, the financials and, and how things operate, but just from the outside looking in, any major cut to the system is going to disproportionately affect really rural America, not just rural Ohio, rural America.
Yeah.
I, I've been tracking, we've been tracking, I mean, it's a major concern, huge concern.
Or this employer, and, and really all the rural hospitals.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I, I saw a top-ten list, and it's a lot of, it's rural, it's rural Ohio is what it is, and the high percentage of, of recipients of services that use Medicare, that's, that is something that SOMC has, and they only get a certain percentage of reimbursement on those services, and that is dragging heavily on them, and there is something we're working on, and we're working with our prosecutor to assist and help, not, not only SOMC, but also King's Daughters, because they, they play a part in our community as well, major part, so we're trying to figure something out that will help recoup the difference, the gap, in those Medicare dollars, and the reason, Ohio is not part of that gene. Kentucky, they get, they get their, pretty much their full reimbursement. We, we don't get it here in Ohio, so there's, there's some things that can be done in Ohio to fix this, and you alluded to that a second ago. We need to catch up with the rest of the country on this thing, and part of the problem is, is that there's so much concern about waste fraud abuse that I, I think they feel like that may be a huge portion of the money, and it's not. I haven't seen proof of that, and especially at the local level, I haven't seen that. I, I don't know of that, I've never heard of that, so, I, I have a lot of major concerns, because SOMC's not going to go away, KDMC's not going to go away, the problem is, services could go away. Certain things that they do could go away, and I'm not speaking for them, I, I plead, but typically what happens when a hospital, any organization loses revenue or cannot, you know, you know, they're losing money, you're, you're bleeding, you're in the red, you find ways to get back in the black, you know, you, you can't stay in the red forever, so they start looking at services. And in our area, we realize that everything that SOMC does, everything that KDMC does, is crucial for our community, and I don't know if you've noticed, I, I've dealt with this, you go to see a specialist, sometimes you're two, three, four months out before you can get a doctor's visit.
Yeah, rural, rural hospitals are in there a lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's already at critical levels where people are putting off important, they're not putting off, they're being put off important services for months, and that just isn't working. That's not good. I mean, you, you can have people that are acute all of a sudden become chronic during that time, so you, which costs more, that costs more money. So, we're watching it. Great question, we're looking, we're advocating, also known as lobbying, we're, we're doing everything we can to get, you know, everybody on board and, and to look at, we cannot lose on rural hospitals, we can't lose services at the rural level. This isn't who we are, this isn't what America should be, it should be better. And we have told our, our congressman, we've told our senators, look, you guys, this isn't going to work, and I'm not a hundred percent behind, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain what's all behind all of this, because there's so many other places we can be looking at. We need to take care of our elderly, elderly population, I've thrown in there, we need to take care of our veterans, and we need to make sure that people are taken care of, that's all there is to it. And we're the greatest nation in, in the world, we need to act like it.
Yeah, I interviewed a retired sheriff from Broward County a week ago, and he, he said that while he supports looking in, like you've said in the past, Commissioner Davis, he supports you looking into a lot of publicly funded organizations for fraud, waste, and abuse, he had problems with the idea that quotas are just being meant for savings, and he didn't think it was right. Deeply concerned by this county. So, I appreciate you gentlemen taking the time to talk to me, thank you and have a good morning.
Any additional, yeah, if you want to join the podium?
You didn't know, you just wanted to go to the podium and head in.
Yes, you may approach. Eckens, step here if you want.
This isn't a justice, this isn't a court, we're not a judge.
Bailiff, get her.
We don't even have a bailiff.
Amanda, can you do something?
The, the microphone's actually the little black box in front of you, you're, you're more than okay, it'll pick you up.
It can hear you.
It'll pick you up, yeah.
That's a fake.
No worries.
I have been trying to make an appointment with Judge Bennett for a month, and she apparently doesn't want to discuss this with me.
Ma'am, could you share, we, we've met too, but can you share just for the people watching?
My name is Constance Freed.
Thank you so much.
So, I would like to read this letter to you, because it says everything I have to say. My name is Connie Freed, and I have had the honor of serving as a CASA volunteer in Sayota County for the last seven years. I was instrumental in helping bring the program to our county, and have personally volunteered more than two thousand hours advocating for children in foster care in this county. When I arrived from Florida after eighteen years of being a volunteer guardian at light of CASA, I found there was no program here. So I called the state office of CASA and abigned the law about the most drug-infested county in the state, why the program wasn't here. Six months later, a woman called me and said, I'm Kenya Johnson, I'm the new coordinator for the CASA program, and I, can we have lunch, because I understand you no more than I do? And so we sat down together, and she did a fabulous job. After five years, she retired and Courtney Brumley replaced her, who has done an even more spectacular job. So, my dedication spans my career, including previous service in Florida for eighteen years as a guardian at light of. I'm reaching out to you, not only as a concerned citizen, but someone deeply committed to the welfare of Ohio's most vulnerable children. Recently, the CASA program in Sayota County was dismantled after Judge Rebecca Bennett declined VOGA and the Ohio CASA funding, and terminated the program's volunteer coordinator. He, she didn't even bother to let Doug Stevens, who is the head of CASA program in Ohio, that she had done this. The only reason he found out was because the woman who was Courtney Brumley's assistant running the office called him and told him. Judge Bennett had cited budget concerns as the reason, yet these financial challenges were created by her own decisions. Despite repeated, repeated requests, Judge Bennett has refused to meet with me or other stakeholders to discuss the future of the child advocacy in our county. The silence is unacceptable. I believe it is critical that the public and our state's leadership are made aware that Sayota County's abused and neglected children have lost a vital voice in court due to lack of community commitment. Now I wrote this to Governor Dewine, I hope you will use your voice and position to help shine a light on this issue and advocate for the reinstatement of CASA services in Sayota County. Our children deserve heaven. There, I have tried to, to discuss this, I wanted to meet with Judge Bennett to discuss why she canceled these grants that she was given, and why she never caught a hold of Doug Stevens, who's the director, and let him know that she was having problems, if she was. We have two-hundred-and-twenty-three children in foster care in this county at the present time. However, that number is considerably down because case managers have sometimes as many as forty cases from DCF. You cannot see every child as many times as you need to when you have forty cases. As the guardian at light of CASA program, we could see kids because we only have one or two cases. Because I know what it was like of one year in Florida, I ended up with five cases. I have pulled kids out of foster care when the foster homes have been so bad, three of them in my lifetime, one of which was here in Sayota County, because mom was supposed to go to drug court, which Judge Lemmons loved, and did wonders with that program, and Judge Bennett is not a peer equality in that drug court. I don't know where to turn now to get some help. I have talked with Doug, I have tried to get this resolved with Judge Bennett, I'm trying to make this as public, as public as possible, because with the two-hundred-and-twenty-three children, we have forty-four trained volunteers, and I know that I saw kids every month, sometimes more. I've taught some of my, owed my CASA kids to fish, I have pulled, right in this county, pulled a child out of the foster care because this child was autistic, placed into foster care with people who haven't a clue of what autism involved. And I know what it involved, because my own grandson, who's now thirty-five, is severely autistic. So I was able to make that judgment, and went with that woman to court and got her child back for her because she was prepared to take on this case now. I also had, in this county, a child who was fourteen years old and placed into foster care. The foster mother got developed cancer and died. There were two other foster children in that home that, the older girls being adopted. The father wanted to take his child with him on vacation to visit his family in Kentucky after the mother died. No, DCF did not want me to do that, they wanted to put her in respite care, another change. We took them to court, we got this child, I told Judge Lemmons I would trust this man with my own granddaughter, because that's how well I had gotten to know him, and she went on her vacation. When she got back, I asked her, how did it go? And she said, the best vacation I ever had. This program cannot go away. These children are so disturbed from having lived in the homes that they lived in, either abused or neglected, that when they find a place that is warm and welcoming, and they have food every day, and they go to bed in a bed that is theirs every night, and they get loving care from foster parents, but if the foster, but that doesn't work out, the guardian at light of CASA program is there to advocate for them. I don't know where else to turn. I have written to the governor, I have written to the chairman of the Republican Party. I'm speaking to you because you may have some suggestions that you can do, or I can do. or I can do. And I don't know what to do at this point.
First off, Connie, I would say thank you so much for your 2,000 hours, over 2,000 hours of just advocating for our most at-risk children. And your service there is, I'm sure, made an impact in many lives.
The reason I couldn't stop doing it was because when I'd save one kid, I'd find another that was out there.
Yeah. In, in terms of the details of Judge Bennett regarding the CASA program, I think I had a conversation. I, I wish I could give you some insight of, of why or why. I, I mean, we both are aware that's under her purview as, as an elected official and as the judge of that, that court of, of what, what services are there. So I can commit that we'll have the conversation to figure out what the details are of, of the decision. Does it mean the decision will change? I don't know. But I will commit to having that conversation and we will try to have a look to see kind of what's going on.
I was hoping you might be able to do that with her.
Yeah.
But she won't, but she won't meet with me apparently.
Okay. And, and I don't know if, I don't know the reason why, but maybe we'll, we'll, we'll try to find out, okay?
I appreciate it.
And I appreciate your time. And thank you for your decades, decades of hard work?
23 years.
23 years, at, at least two decades.
Yeah, and if we could get her phone number, after we follow up, it'd be-
You don't have to give it up. We're in live, so I don't want-
Yeah, don't give out her phone number.
I don't want all the telemarketers to watch.
Okay. I know.
So, so before you leave-
I have other ideas.
I, I mean-
I'm not right now.
Yeah. Absolutely. Really, for us, it's, it's fact-finding. But we're also very mindful of where our authority begins and ends and where our authority begins and ends.
Yeah, and, and I think what you're doing, you're, you're, you're doing, you're, you're going for the right people. I mean, you're, you made it public here. This is going to be seen by a lot of people. And you, you're talking to the governor. I'm not, I'm not aware exactly the decision-making, what went into that. But she has total 100% jurisdiction over her court. And that's something we can't, you know, we can't tell her what to do, you know, or any judge for that matter. But we can have a discussion.
That's what I was hoping you might do.
Yeah, to better understand.
Since she won't see me, I want to know why.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
I have heard rumors that she didn't, didn't like the last director.
Okay.
And all I can tell you is, for a respectful volunteer, she's a family.
Thank you for that, Connie.
We will do, we will talk to her, okay? We'll commit to you to do that. And then we, we do want to get some contact information.
Just not, just not-
Just not right now. We'll get it once the cameras stop, okay? Okay. Because we're on air. See how fancy we are?
With that bottom on the table.
Any additional questions on the agenda? Nothing? Any comments?
Um, everybody, stay cool. I mean, we've already-
Stay cool. You need to share.
It's true. It's so hot and, and it doesn't look like we're going to get a regreening soon. I know we got, some people got rain yesterday, but it just steamed it up. So try to stay cool. Check on your neighbors, especially the elderly. Check on, make sure they're okay. Let's, let's do all that we can to get through this together. It looks like it's going to be a typical southern Ohio summer, maybe a little bit hotter. And I know that there was at least one million people with splash pads the last three days. And that's an unofficial number, by the way. Okay? But, but yeah, there was a lot of people there. And we were, we were able to do that. And yes.
Are there any cooling stations?
There are. There are.
So Larry Hollis has a fantastic job sharing on the EMA Facebook page.
Share yours, too.
Where he thinks you're lost. So there's multiple cooling stations.
Yeah, New Boston, the Community Center in New Boston, you go in. Matter of fact, they not only have refreshments, but they also have chips. Some of the gay can go in, they have tables set up. Salvation Army here in Portsmouth was Nile.
I saw some of the townships.
Chipfire Department. And there was another one somewhere. They, they tried to distribute them pretty evenly throughout the, the county. Definitely, oh, my goodness, it's hot. And I know there's a lot of people that are really warm right now. So let's help each other if you can and drink lots of fluids because we don't need anybody. We don't need anybody with heatstroke. It's okay. You've got Mr. McKenzie.
Yes, sir. Mr. McKenzie.
I just spoke to Brian Troy. I want to ask some questions. We've got a brain problem. I probably have a little addiction.
Okay.
And this has been going on since, over around 2014, 2018. I don't, I had some questions, but I can't. I can't find them. But it would be better for you folks if I lost some Chris Bennett, something we were talking about. Right, right in the world.
It's a township.
Okay. I was, I was getting ready to ask.
It's a township, yes.
And you've gone to the trustees?
Well, yeah. Last time I had Chris Ray's phone, I know. He didn't do. Tim Whither said that's going to take care of it. And Chris Ray said Tim come back and told me this. Chris Ray said it didn't need to take care of it. I'm sorry, it was a 20-inch brain. I think we left that much of a shot at the time.
Okay.
And I had called the county engineer's office to see what was going on. And they are paying for that short session. It's the good brain or a whole gut on the south side. And they come down and they'll use a murder halfway down it, and they stop.
Any, any of the locations so we can also have a conversation with Madison Townsend?
If you'd like, I'll gladly show you.
Okay.
It's a, it's an infrastructure issue. What we was talking about earlier.
Making sure I understand you.
Yeah, it is.
Go round that to the moat to the park. That's where the old brain and there's a spare brain.
It needs excavated too, doesn't it, really? Yeah.
Well, I don't know what happened there. You should do a 30-inch brain. It needs help.
Okay.
Moving out of that, and that's all I know.
All right. Thank you, sir. Another promise, Mr. Davis? I just want to commend Grow Glue's of Opportunities, the Glow Group, on a very successful, yet again, thankfully not too hot, drive-in that they had over the past weekend. The Glow Group continues to do fantastic jobs there in Lucasville on the short time they've been around. But we, we participated in that on Saturday night with the family and got to watch Wicked on the big screen, so it's always good. But they just do a great job. I know they've been having cleanup events. The, the park is, I suppose we have an ribbon, but I know that's on their Facebook page. The Ampli Theater's pretty much done. And the commissioner's helped with part of the project out there with their shelter house. And they're now moving toward it. And I believe they have the funding already for their playground equipment. So, you know, if you, if you have a local group of motivated, motivated folks, they can move mountains. They're not the government, but they figured out a way to, to raise funds and get it done. So we appreciate all of their hard work. And once again, congratulations on another great event. I think they probably have another one scheduled in the fall. Also, next week is 4th of July. So there's a lot of activities in the community. You know, I know Portsmouth has theirs, New Boston, Rubyville. I'm going to send you money locally. But take your family out, enjoy the 4th. Support these organizations that also do these events because it's, it's not free. So if you're able to participate and, and support them, by all means, please do. That's all I have for today. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mr. Powell?
Hi. Thanks, everybody. Stay cool.
Thank you.